There is Ms. Jennifer Arsenal, Ms. Mr. Randy Goodman.
President.
And Mr. Cooper Robinson.
Here.
We have a call.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of June seventeenth. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion in a second.
Uh, roll call vote, Ms. Arsenal.
Aye.
Mr. Goodman.
Aye.
And Mr. Robbins.
Next item on the agenda is the application for variance by Mr. Adam Ingram. This matter was before the board, before, I believe we had a split vote, so unless somebody's changed their mind, we hope we can break that tie today. Do we want to start from the beginning since Jennifer hasn't heard any of it?
I can, just to give a brief rundown of what was discussed previously and what the item is about. Um, the item or the property that we're discussing is at Sooner Road and Waterloo Road in the north part of the county. As you can see there in the picture, the property was recently rezoned, uh, commercial. Uh, and they're gonna have four or five lots there to do various type of commercial offices, type of development. Um, they're on the east side of the property of lot two and three. They want to move the setback requirement that we have closer to the property of the east. Uh, the clo- the property of the east is a church that's been there for quite some time. Uh, it's zoned R two, and so when you have commercial zoning adjacent to residential zoning, you have a re- higher requirement of the commercial zoning to provide site proof screening, fencing, other requirements like that, uh, but also there's a greater setback that we have as well. So the setback, uh, originally is twenty-five feet and they're wanting to go to ten feet on that east side. Now, to complicate matter just a little bit more, um, at same time, uh, the Department of Transportation is going to improve the interchange of I thirty-five and Waterloo Road, which is just further to the east off the picture. So Waterloo Road over the next probably couple of years are gonna start construction. They're gonna widen Waterloo Road from a two-lane facility to a four-lane facility. And they're also going to improve the intersection there, uh, of Sooner and Waterloo Road. Uh, the county wants to put in a roundabout there at that particular intersection. And then they're gonna four-lane a portion of Sooner Lo- Sooner Road as you come south, four-lane as well. Uh, the, the issue with the roundabout is on the southwest corner, you have a cemetery. On the northwest corner, you're in Logan County, but there is a convenience store, gas station that sits right on that corner. And so obviously you can't move a cemetery and that gas station, uh, just where the, uh, fueling underground storage tanks are, are so close to that intersection. Our thought is that we would come further to the south and east into this property more than likely. So I just wanted to provide all that information so you have a complete picture of what they're asking for, but also what is gonna be coming out there in the future as far as road improvements. So that's all the information I have. There is, uh, excuse me, there is one more thing. There was a letter protest, protest that was sent. I think everybody received it. I do have a copy of it here if you want to review it as well.
From the church, right, about the playground facility?
Right, that's correct, the church to the east. Uh, now with that said, that's all the information I have.
Thank you. Is the applicant here today?
Mr. Ingram?
Hello, my name is Jason Emmett. I'm with Cedar Creek Consulting, representing Adam Ingram today. Uh, do you need my address? No, okay. Uh, as he stated, the request is to go from twenty-five feet to ten feet. I would point out that a church can go on any type of zoning. It doesn't have to be residential. It could have been commercial and a church is not a residential use. Um, there's a lot of confines that we're dealing with on this site. He mentioned the roundabout, um, taking land from the west. We're trying to make the most usable space possible on a piece of property. The twenty-five foot setback also doesn't preclude us from putting parking on it. It just has to do with the building. So in my opinion, I feel like the, the ten-foot setback with a building up against the property is better than having parking up against the property. I think we talked a little bit last time about the, uh, playground use on the west side of the church. We've talked about, we're willing to put up a, a site barrier fence. Um, there's also a ten-foot grade difference. Uh, we are ten-foot higher than the church is right now. So again, I just feel that the, the ten-foot setback with a building is better than having a twenty-five foot setback with cars parked up against the edge of the parking lot, or I mean, of the playground.
If your setback request wasn't approved, would that be your secondary plan, put parking there instead?
We'd have to, yes. We have, there's a certain amount of square footage we have to obtain on the lot just to make it feasible to do the project. So yes, we would end up having to put paving up against that area instead of a building. I, I had a exhibit that I wanted to show you if I could.
What about future bills? Is there approval of the drive-in? What's the address gonna be like for this gas lot? Okay. So they won't be connected for through traffic? Yeah, that's good. Right, okay.
Is that the home that's on lot one now?
That's gone.
It's gone? Okay. Have they finalized plans as to what they want to do with lot one?
And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, my, my observations and concerns are the same as before. We're talking about, uh, fifteen feet. When you own all of lot one, and there's no definitive plans as to what to do with that yet. You owns lot three and you own lot four. And this is, this is jackalope holdings, correct?
That is correct.
That's you, Mr. Ingram?
That's correct.
Um, and we do have, and, and for my purposes, we do have an objection by the, by the church, so, if you didn't own lot one, I think it would be a much more significant issue to me than it is. But because you do own lot one, I just don't see why that can't be utilized for fifteen feet. Cause you're only gonna be going down, I guess, to the, to the south side of lot two, correct?
Right. If the roundabout happens, it kills all of lot one.
Now, how does it do that?
Because they're not going to move the cemetery or the, uh, gas station pont- or I guess tanks. So they'll move the roundabout into lot one. So lot one is something that we don't know what's going to happen with it yet.
Okay, but moving it fifteen feet wouldn't kill all value of lot one. The roundabout may encroach upon it, but we're not sure exactly what that's gonna be, correct?
We've done preliminary layouts on lot one facing Sooner right now. The building can only be fifty-foot wide and still get the parking in front. It's already so thin.
How, how wide is lot one?
Hundred and seventy feet, but you'll notice here the grade difference right there. That's a twelve-foot gap. But not only are we restricted on, on what we could do, but just the grading out there along, there's plenty of ball on the site that we have to pick up somehow. Again, if I was focused on any of that, it's not a relatively big site anymore. The lane is not worth it.
Um, hundred and twenty feet, where's that on?
Uh, seven.
Hundred and seven? Is that the same width as lot two?
No, it's smaller, but you'll notice here also that we're restricted on lot one.
Yeah, correct.
Depends on how many gas lines are here.
Yeah, easements, utility easements.
It's a very, very tight site.
You can see that.
And I might also add that if, even if you denied it, we, we're not taking that long one. We were just looking to go and make it longer and now we have to change that.
Okay. Even though there's no plans for it and you're not sure what the roundabout's gonna do?
They couldn't develop it for the purpose that they're currently intending?
At a hundred?
For what they're wanting to do.
At a hundred and fifty-five feet?
If the church wasn't zoned residentially, then that church isn't, churches typically go in commercial or investment.
You might speak into the speaker, please.
Ch- churches typically can go in any kind of zoning. It just so happens that it's residential. If it was in a commercial zoning, which a lot of them are, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. A ten-foot setback for a commercial use like a church or a public use is not, is not unheard of.
I think what we're talking about too is about density changes because we've got R two across the way as well with the, next to the cemetery. And if you look further down south on Sooner Road, it is in a height, but we're seeing that area change.
Gotcha.
Right, so, um, I understand your concern. I, is the, does the church happen to be here? I just wonder what precedent we're setting to set a variance like this at this time when it's been requested that we don't. And would a parking lot be worse than the back of the building? I don't, I don't know. That answer is the neighbor.
Well, how, how long have they, I guess they bought all these lots at the same time, jackalope did? Did they purchase all these lots at the same time?
Uh, jackalope purchased everything in blue and we're in the process of plating it into what you see the lots showing.
Yes. For res- for apartments or?
No, it's, it's all gonna be retail and office use. I believe lot four, they're, they're in discussions. I don't know if it'll turn out to be this, but they're in discussions for more of like industrial type uses.
Okay.
Did you say it was twenty twenty-one when they purchased it?
I think it was. I looked at it back in May. I don't remember, but I think it was twenty twenty-one maybe when that was purchased. It says it is. The light is green? Yeah, the light's green. The light is green, okay. Apologies.
Anything else? Anybody else that wants to speak on this?
I didn't know if the county engineer would have more information in regards to the, uh, roundabout as far as if it was gonna be placed there potentially, what the effect would be.
It hasn't been designed yet, but, uh, it's a correct assumption that it will move to the south and east. And if it's a single-lane roundabout, it won't encroach too much on the lot one. A double-lane, we'll get twenty more feet on there. The south part of lot one will not be affected. The north part will a little bit.
So would it, commonly with roundabouts, if you're going from a two-lane or a four-lane facility along Waterloo to the east, will you enter that roundabout in a single lane or more than likely?
Well, I think it's, it's actually gonna need that three-lane, uh, on Waterloo, not four.
Okay.
The last sense.
So it's gonna be one lane in each direction with a turn lane?
Yes. So a single lane as possible.
Anybody else present that wanna speak on this issue?
I'm, I'm Eric Flesky, uh, six hundred Northwest Twenty-third. I'm the developer of the site and I think to, uh, Mr. Goodman to clarify, the real reason for the adjustment is, is the topography. When you really get down to it, cause the way it's designed now between lot one and two is gonna have to be a twelve-foot wall. And between the church in there needs to be the wall. So when you said they, the owner, developer, Adam, has more land, you can't take more of lot one and add it to lot two because we've got a twelve-foot difference. Yeah, you got a twelve-foot difference. So it's really coming down to, all right, we're dealt with these dimensions. We're stuck.
You don't wanna buy a lot of dirt to bring in.
Well, it's not, it's not the buying of the dirt. It's what's better for the other side. Constant traffic or limiting traffic and having the building which provides partial protection. So our opinion is partial protection unless traffic is the better decision than making that side. So as it exists now, if you look at the site plan, traffic is designed if the variance is passed on the west side of the building. If it doesn't pass today, we're shifting all that traffic to the other side.
Have you spoken with the elders who wrote the protest letter? Is the developer, have you had any contact with your neighbor?
So I'm the developer of the lot, so I have another contract. I'm not Adam and the one developing it. Adam has made many attempts to work with the church on this easement. We also tried to work, or Adam tried to work to get access to help them through lot four. Um, we also tried to work with them on joint detention. And after six months of many meetings and efforts, the church basically said no to everything. And it would have been nice because a lot of the joint detention, joint access would have made it better for everybody. So basically now we're stuck here today asking for this variance. But I do believe it's better to keep the traffic for lot two on the west side, which we need that variance to do.
I can definitely appreciate the.
You know, because cars, we imagine, are gonna turn. So the concerns in their letter by counteract is that turning is what would be the risk.
Of course.
If you put the building there, there is no turning and there's, everything parks the other direction. So the best protection for all their concerns is what we're asking for today.
And then do I remember that that first tenant is gonna be maybe an access medical?
It's a, it's an urgent care, yes. That is correct.
Did you say there's a twenty, did you say twelve or twenty-five foot drop?
So.
Lane lots one, lots two? I know there is.
Right, there's, there's a double elevation. It's like a, it's a plateau and a plateau. So when you said limitations, like why couldn't we not take more of lot one and not do the variance? We have an elevation of another ten or twelve feet, right? So we're dealing with three, a three-tiered system at the moment. We got lot one, we got lot two, and we got the church. So.
So what are your plans to address the different, that, that twelve-foot or ten-foot difference for future plans and future development?
So, so I would be the one building this wall. If you pass this today, I'd be the one building the wall at the ten-foot mark. My intention is to do a stair-stepped wall because if I do a solid wall, it's ugly. If I stair-step the wall, I can make it look a little prettier. And actually, this is what I'm trying, so this hasn't been proven yet. It's potential to even plant some vegetation in it. So it makes it softer and a little more organic than just a solid wall. If it, the setback is not passed today, we have a twenty-five-foot slope that's hard to maintain and it will both likely end up just being ugly natural grass because I can't mow it, if that makes sense. It gets difficult. So actually aesthetically, the wall that I'm, we're intending to build will actually be better as well.
Where would that wall be? If the building abuts to that ten-foot line, are you wanting to put the wall on the property line itself?
So we have, if you pass it today, we would have ten feet. Within that ten feet, we would come back because I can't go on their property. So within eight feet of that ten feet, I would be doing, it's almost like landscape blocks, but commercial where you set a block and step back and then step back and then as you step back, we go up. So the stair step is going up in an eight-foot period of, out of the ten. We get one foot off the property line. We get off the foundation of the building and we do the stair-step wall. And again, if there's a way to plant some vegetation on it, I would like it. Cause anything I can do to not make an ugly wall, it'd be great. If it's a flat wall, it's really ugly.
So you really won't know what's gonna happen with lot one or this part of it?
Um, it is, my understanding, lot one is under contract with, uh, a, a dentist. Um, but beyond that, I don't know their site plan or anything of that nature. But I do know that Adam's intention and most likely, lot one and two will be some commercial uses, uh, medical or retail. Lot three and south of one right now, the small box will most likely be maybe office because it affrontage. And then the lot four is probably going to be flex use. So you're going to see a mixed use development.
Would it be possible to put the, since lot two and lot one have the ten or eleven foot?
Yes, sir.
Difference in elevation? Wouldn't it be possible to put the retaining wall on the west side of lot two and then backfill it with dirt? Lot one? If you say it's ten, fill it up?
What's that? Yeah.
There's a wall between one and two. Can you hear the?
Other speaker. Excuse me.
Would you re-ask your question, whether asking the point or some, make sure we're understanding what you're asking, sir?
You said that the, that there's an elevation change between lot two and lot one of about ten, eleven, twelve feet? My question is, since you're gonna build a retaining wall anyhow, could you not build that on the west side of lot two and backfill it, the, the, the difference in elevation with dirt?
If we are. Yeah, that, that's actually, that's the way it is right now. You've got a tier, lot one is way up here. Then you have a wall that goes down, then you have lot two, and then you have another wall between the church and the, and lot two.
Though there already is a wall between.
No, but, but there's, it's not built yet, but yes, that's the plan.
That's the plan.
So another way of asking that, from Sooner to the east side of lot two is a twenty-foot elevation change. And we're splitting the elevation, ten foot in the middle and ten foot on that side, if that makes sense. So we're stair-stepping it down already.
Okay. And I suppose when Jackalope bought this, they were aware of all those elevation changes and all this?
Yeah, who knows, you know? Mother nature and, uh, has given us a lot of unique things to develop on in the.
Anything else?
No, sir. Unless you have any other questions?
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess we're ready for a roll call vote. If you have anything to add.
No, thank you, thank you.
I'd like, I'd like to say one thing. I'm all for commercial development and I like to make sure that it happens any, any time that it can. Uh, I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, the church voicing objection. I know they're not here, but they did, they did voice one.
They were here for the first meeting in May.
Oh, they were?
Mm-hmm, and the applicant was not. I remember that one, yeah.
And plus the precedence issue, so I, uh, and plus we have the unknown for the developer, for Jackalope, I guess, about this roundabout. I've never been bonded around abouts. I've seen enough of those in England and Europe about, will have to encounter one in Oklahoma, but I guess
They're all over.
They're growing everywhere.
They're all over in District Three. Go drive District Three.
All right. Call the vote.
Someone's gotta make a motion first.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we deny the variance request due to the fact that we, as far as explaining in detail about an exceptional undue hardship, I, I don't know that we can do that with what's existing there today.
I'll stake up the motion.
All right, roll call vote, Ms. Arsenal?
Aye.
Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Nay.
Back to the drawing board, gentlemen. Thank you. We have the application of Jonathan and Desiree Sokol on the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Was applicant present?
Yes.
Did I pronounce your name right?
Just to provide just a little bit of background, uh, cause I don't know if, I know Ms. Arsenal wasn't in the board in the past. Uh, if you have the, if you read to the staff report that we provided, um, this particular lot is in a subdivision in the southeast part of the county. And you can see there, they have added a mobile home, uh, to the property for the medical hardship. The Board of Adjustment, uh, has approved the medical hardship twice. Uh, both for three-year periods of time. And so she's back to, uh, extend that hardship, uh, potentially for another three years. The board has the ability to approve one, two, or three years. At that point in time, if the medical hardship is still needed, then we'll be back for another meeting at whatever time you guys, uh, provide. Um, we did have, uh, one letter of not protest, but actually there were four the item and I, and I didn't provide that letter to you guys. It was something that we just got just the other day. So I wanted to provide that letter to you so you can take a quick look at it. So I'll give you an opportunity to look at that. If you have any other questions, maybe more than happy to answer those. Uh, this is Ms. Sokol who lives on the property there.
I'm sorry, Eric, could you say the last, uh, waiver or variance was for three years?
So both of them are for three years. So there's been two that have been approved so far, each for three-year terms. This would be the third request that is being heard today. The Board of Adjustment has the ability to approve that request for one, two, or three years. So if you grant her request for another three years, uh, if it's something that needs to continue, then we'll be back in three years to, to discuss the issue at that point again.
Okay, thank you. You have anything you would like to add?
Um, excuse me, um, my grandmother, she's still in poor health. Um, she has spinal stenosis and so I can even tell a difference. She's getting real hump back. And I, of course, do her laundry, clean her house and go to grocery store. I do all the things for her. Um, I'm, I'm kind of even surprised that I had to come back this time because I just, I see her health decline more and more every year. Um, last time I was here, I had made like arrangements with the other lady that was here and some of the other board. I think you were here. No? Okay. I remember it was another lady and two other gentlemen. And, um, the storage unit that we have, we, cause whenever my grandmother passes, that, the one that she's living in, the house, is going to get moved. Um, if she's finished paying for it, we'll sell it. Or if, um, she hasn't finished paying for it, I'm gonna have, you know, have the bank come and get it. Um, and then the storage unit will get moved over so that it is within the twenty-five foot. Um, because we didn't realize, um, there was a covenants. And so we thought it only had to be ten feet. And so that's why we didn't do it correctly the first time. And so, sorry about that.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this matter? Maybe then I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the hardship request.
For how long? For years, sounds fine to me.
For years. We have a letter from the neighbor who doesn't have a prob- We have a letter from the neighbor who doesn't have a problem with it. It's been there for six years. For a medical reason, I think it seems appropriate.
One second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, Ms. Arsenal?
Aye.
Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
And Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the application of Jason Skiller. Mr. Brandt, if you could?
Yes, I would.
Brief?
Yes, I will provide some background information and, and some pictures as well in this particular case. Um, the storage facility, uh, that's in question is off of Southeast Twenty-Ninth. It's about a half mile east on, uh, of Henni on the north side of the road. Uh, now he currently has a sign there on the property and I'll provide pictures of what is out there currently. Uh, basically it's a monument type of sign, basically advertises the business name, location, um, web address, so people can look at the storage facility. Sure it has rate information. And so he's wanting to replace that sign with more of a pole type of sign and, and I'll provide those dimensions here. Uh, but the pole sign in it, in itself is, is not really the issue. The main issue that the county's regulations does not allow is the lighting and the LED component to it. So basically easiest way to describe it is there's eight feet, uh, of basically pole. There is a two feet LED sign in the middle to where it can change wording, advertisement. And then the remainder of the sign, which is eight feet, has the business name, phone number and all that. So really what we're here to discuss is, is the LED portion of the sign itself. The county's regulations automatically does not allow those type of signs. And so the Board of Adjustment has the ability to approve those type of signs. Um, kind of an example, uh, most people are familiar with are schools. When you're driving by most schools today, they have these LED signs that talk about certain activities at school. Phone numbers you can contact as far as school administration and they change as, as the activity of the school change. So it'd be very similar to that type of sign, um. So I.
I wonder if those school signs though, don't they have maybe a limitation on lumens? On the amount of, um, light pollution and the coloration as well?
We, we do as well, but the county's regulation doesn't allow those signs, period.
Right.
So in the past, as an example, really the main school district that the county deals with is Deer Creek. And so in the northwest part of the county. So they've been before this board in the past to have those type of signs up. Um, so sure, there is a Lumen lighting limitation, but the county's regulations really prevent any of those signs, just period. And so that's, that's the main issue that we're here to discuss today. Also, uh, there was one letter of protest that was sent to us by an adjacent property owner, uh, to the east. And there have also been some phone calls, uh, that we received just asking questions, um, concern. And so let me pass out these pictures as well as the letter of protest because it was something that we have just received here in the last day or so. So let me provide you that information.
Is this the mock-up? Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Do they have a rendering without that there? Okay. Does it meet the heights restriction already? Okay. And the locations get like the site triangle and all of that, yeah.
Or you did approach it.
So that's all the information that I have to present. I don't know if you have any additional questions, me. I know the applicant is here as well to speak on the item.
Okay. Would the applicant like to? Stand up?
Hello, my name is Jason Skiller. I am the grandfather of Owen, Owen's covenants. Um, so basically we're just trying to, God, it's hot. We're just trying to be able to, when people drive by, have a sign out there that one, whenever they drive by, to tell them the time, the temperature, stuff like that, just information. Information about what we have going on at the storage facility. Um, there is a sign right across the street that, I mean, it's that one? It, right, it's right across, literally right across the street. Right there, so. That would be a ghost fire from where we are now. So, I mean, and it does have LED and it does, I mean, it's, it's even bigger than what we would have. Oh, yes, sir.
What, what municipality is it in? It's in the city?
Yeah, the, the dividing line between us and in Oklahoma City is Southeast Twenty-Ninth. So as you go, as you take that diagonal turn to the north and, and east, that southeast corner is Oklahoma City and as you continue back to the south and east, all that's Oklahoma City. But as you go back west towards Henni, from where he is, if you go directly south and you go west, there is a portion there that is unincorporated Oklahoma County. So it's kind of an odd little area. But at least as far as what he's referring to, that sign that he's talking about is in Oklahoma City.
Well, I mean, it's, the whole district around there is growing. Um, I've, the lady adjacent to us on the east side, she just redid her, um, her portion of her property. She kept two acres. She's selling five and a half acres, almost six acres. Zone commercial, um, so she's gonna be between two commercial properties. But, I mean, that's, I mean, there's a lot of commercial properties out there. I mean, we're just trying to be able to advertise, try to help a business grow.
The, the, uh, resident that's filed the objection, have you talked to her?
So yes and no. When we first started this whole thing, like, we bought our property in December. She brought her property in November. And she screamed and hollered at me and said she didn't wanna live by no crappy storage facility. So there's been some, there's been some tension there since, since day one. Um, so, yeah, no, I mean, I've tried to talk to her. She's, she's not very friendly. Like, he tried to take her. Her husband passed away. He tried to take her food and she was rude to him. I mean, she just, I, I don't know. She's just not a funny. Yeah, yeah, put a no trespassing sign whenever he went over there to offer condolences and food for, for, so, I mean, and again, she just moved her mom and dad in there also. Um, so she's got somebody there to help her around the, around the place, cause it's a pretty big place.
How far is Malaski's place from this place?
Malaski.
That's who the sign that she did.
Hun- hun- yeah, hundred and six, from, from where our sign to the where their sign is at Crow's Flies, it's a hundred and sixty-two feet.
Hundred and sixty-two feet on the nor- on the south side of it.
Correct, yes, yep.
And she's on the, she's to the east of you too?
She's to, yeah, yeah, it's even, like, that sign's even closer to her. Yeah. As a matter of fact, it's right across the street from her property. Like, literally, her property's there. It's literally, it's probably thirty-two feet from her property.
So she already has one sign thirty-two feet from her property?
Yes.
She's upset about possibly the second sign?
Mine, yeah.
Mr. Brandt, sir, when you said there are already county restrictions on the amount of the rooms, I know some of these when they go bright orange, bright pink and they are pretty bright, as opposed to just a scroll that says ninety-two degrees.
Right.
Right, so they could, like I said, the county's regulations as far as these type of signs, when you're dealing with moving advertisement is they're prohibited, period. So anytime anybody wants to do these type of signs, they have to come in front of the Board of Adjustment to get them installed. So we really don't have that many as far as our jurisdiction. Um, I will say, like Mr. Skiller and stated, just to kinda give you a more picture, bigger picture of this area. Like he stated, directly east to him is a piece of property where the ma- the majority of it was recently rezoned commercial. So if I recall correctly, that parcel that is next to him, I think it was a total of seven or eight acres. Six of that is commercial. Now where you see the house directly east of the storage facility, that two acres is still R two. So she's kinda put herself in a pocket, if you will. Then as you go west from his property, sure you have residential there. As you continue west to the next one, that was recently rezoned to commercial. Uh, they haven't applied for any permits, but they want to put a RV lot to where it would be RV sales and repair. Not an RV lot as far as people living there. It would be selling RVs and repairing them. As you continue west from there, a lot of those lots are zoned, uh, commercial. We have one that it's zone multifamily residential. And there actually, there's, uh, three or four quadplexes that have been out there for decades now. Uh, I wanna say at least the eighties, maybe early nineties, they've been out there for quite some time. And as you go back to the west again, it's more commercial. On the south side, you have commercial. Uh, you have a shopping center with numerous, uh, commercial activities there. If you go on the other side of Henni Road, there is a PUD that was rezoned, I wanna say it's about four or five years ago. It has not been developed. It's a, there's a six lot, uh, well, it's eight lots total. There's two lots to the north that are residential and there's actually homes on those lots currently. But the six lots of commercial that faces Southeast Twenty-Ninth West of Henni have not been developed and that's a commercial PUD. On the south side of it, of that, there is a commercial corner that's part of the PUD that has not been developed. Uh, there are four residential lots that have been part of that PUD. Two of those lots were recently rezoned to, uh, duplexes. So there are two new duplexes that sit on two of those lots. Uh, and then as you continue west, you get back into Midwest City. As you continue north from here and back to the east, you get in the Choctaw. And then as you continue south along Henni and Southeast Twenty-Ninth, you get in the city of Oklahoma City. So really it's this square mile here from Henni back to Choctaw Road, from Twenty-Ninth back to Fifteen. That just happens to be unincorporated Oklahoma County. That over the years is, you know, especially recently, has a lot of development in regards to commercial. That could be potentially, as you go back to the east, there is an interchange for the new turnpike. So it's easier access to getting on and off on the turnpike to this area. So potentially that's part of it, but it has developed, uh, commercially quite a bit over the last few years. So I just wanted to give you a more complete picture of what was out there.
So the sign is there now?
So if you look at the pictures that you have in front of you, the sign that is, has the wooden frame that is basically on the mount, on the ground, we would consider that a monument sign. And so the sign that is next to it, to the right on the picture that you see, that would be the sign that they're replacing with if their request is granted. So you can see it's basically a pole sign with a two-foot LED lighting there that would change as far as the information and then.
I mean, so, so which part of that sign is the, they say?
Uh, the middle part.
The middle part, the whole bottom part?
But this could be all, you know what I mean? But this is the part that's the LED. This is the flat sign. You're looking at incredible improvements already.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, you're, I think you're gonna get great business from that new sign without the LED.
Okay.
All right.
So that's what he's, what he's requesting now.
I, I do have the sign company here. If you'd like to ask him some questions?
Okay.
Kate Kowalski, I'm with Industrial Signs. Like, like you was mentioning, this property is a bit of an anomaly because it on all sides of it, you have Choctaw, Midwest City and then Oklahoma City, which all of those municipalities do allow for LED signs. Just like Sam Lansky down the street, we did that sign a number of years ago, our company did. So it's just kind of in a area where, um, if it was a hundred yards this way or a hundred yards this way, but we find ourselves in this little circle of unincorporated land. Uh, I think the main issue probably would be, if there was objection, would be light pollution. You guys have a table, uh, that would, that would, it would be adhered to, whether it was in the day or at night as well. So if light pollution was the biggest cause of concern, uh, that table, which you guys have created in your sign regulations would be what we adhere to, so.
We don't have a table for light pollution or lumens for the county because it's not allowed in county municipality, correct?
It's in the sign regulations.
That would maybe for Oklahoma City or?
No, ma'am. It's out of county.
We do have, so LED signs themselves aren't allowed. However, if you wanted to have, let's say you have the same sign, but there's no moving parts, but you wanted to illuminate the face of that sign on either side. Yes, there are illumination of requirements that are still in place.
Okay, that's what you're referring to is just a lit, a, a backlit?
Yes, ma'am. It's a, it's the calculated sign area. And it, it's like, for this instance, it would be like thirty-six foot. You cannot have point three candles, uh, foot candles, but the, the board would, I mean, even in Oklahoma City and Midwest City and Choctaw, there is a nighttime schedule that you have to adhere to, uh, because this is a common issue. It's in, uh, in each of those municipalities as well, when it does a residential zoning, so these LED signs are, are allowed. They just have to adhere to a strict schedule of, okay, when it's nighttime, it has to get on this many lumens. In this case, the top cabinet, which is the static portion of that sign, at nighttime would actually be probably brighter, actually would be brighter than the LED because it would be turned down, so. It'd be like a standard pylon sign that you would see like in McDonald's or Starbucks that just doesn't dim at night, so.
You have any further questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here to speak against it?
Okay. Yes, sir.
My name's Richard Archer and I own the property to the west, I believe, of, of this storage facility.
Okay.
And we've rezoned it residential a few years ago and made it into an apartment where my son lives now.
When you said to the left, do you mean to the east?
The west.
Okay, just making sure.
My dangers are. Um, and we have some concerns about the display sign. I've lived out there currently over forty years. And I've known the people that owned that property before for over sixty years. And there's been a lot of wrecks on that curve through the years. And we wonder if a display sign, people trying to read things would make it more distracting and cause more traffic hazard there. I was a firefighter in Choctaw for twenty years, so I've run a lot of wrecks out there. Also, that sign, the lighting on it would be over ten feet tall. And there's only a six-foot fence between the properties and it would sh- shine right in our kitchen. My son has a picture on his phone at five in the morning, looking out that window. I mean, it, it already looks like a landing strip over there, the storage buildings, which we had nothing to say about that. But the sign. But the sign.
Lights for the storage facility.
That really runs in the picture or actually Stan Molaski's light. But the, the sign that they're proposing is gonna be.
Sir, if you'd like to speak, would you come up to the microphone and let us know who you are?
I'm Dustin Archer. I live directly west of this property. And the proposed sign is approximately a hundred and fifty feet out my kitchen window. And there's already so much light pollution from the storage facility. That I, I know it's kinda silly, but I can't even go out on the fourth and watch fireworks anymore. I could do that for, before the storage was there. I mean, there's already so much light pollution and I don't think any more lights is necessary.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
Um, and I guess that's all we have, the traffic concern and the light pollution.
Is your property right, is this right across from Southeast Door? Southeast Door's on the south side?
So if you, so if you look at, at the red X there on the map, the building that is directly west is the residence that. That they live, where they live.
I'm sorry, but this picture makes it seem like there's another commercial structure. That's a building, that's a commercial building. Yeah, thank you.
That's the fence line in the county or in Midwest City or in Oklahoma City, Song County?
So this lot, where this commercial building, it used to be, you know, it's a residential, that are multiple residential structures on that lot? Okay. Okay. And Dustin has one of the apartments, I'm sorry, in this?
That, the front part is.
Okay, what, I'm sorry.
I, I was gonna say that the front part of that, where he's saying apartments is apartment, that's where I live. One bedroom, one kitchen, one living room.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here have anything to say? Any questions, any further questions?
May I ask you a question of the applicant?
And I will say there's some street lights right across the street from his house also.
I'm, I don't doubt the light pollution there. Uh, I just wonder if you have spoken with your sign company about if this LED screen wasn't there. Do you think that your business could still achieve visibility?
Sure, I mean, I mean, a hundred percent better than that, yes, I mean.
It's a beautiful sign, honestly. It looks really nice. Well, that's pretty impressive, too.
Um, yeah, I mean, the LED sign just gives us, you know. No, I mean, as far as that right there, yes, I mean, it's a thousand times better.
Thank you.
If you'd like to step up to the speaker, please.
I'm Sandra Archer. And we have no objection to a sign whatsoever. It's the LED part that we. It, w- w- we're so light polluted already from that being there. When we, when it wasn't there, there was no problem. It was, you know, dark. And now he can't even hardly go in his kitchen because it's just where the existing lights are right now. And that's part of why we are saying we don't want any more lights. Because the, the actual sign, I think, is eighteen feet, eight inches tall total. And that LED light would just go right into, I mean, it'd just add to the pollution that we already have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wanted, I wanted to add, um, the, the static portion of that sign that says Owen Scovis is illuminated as well. Which is under code, will be code, so regardless if the LED is on or off at night, there's still gonna be seven thousand. Uh, K Lumen LEDs under code, which means code that's gonna be on at all times at night, so. Um, the LED screen, I'm not sure how much will add to that. Um, if it's, if it's adhering to the schedule of the, the nighttime schedule of your digital displays, which I did confirm was in the, is in county sign code, so.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Thank you, guys.
If there's no one else, I would entertain a motion. Anyone wants to make one?
I would move to approve the variance request.
I'll second.
Uh, roll call vote, Ms. Arsenal?
Nay.
Mr. Goodman?
Nay.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, next item on the agenda, is there any new business before us? That you're aware of?
No, there is none.
Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I second the motion.
Are you, she's, are you making the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Arsenal?
Aye.
Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
And Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all.